Call to order the March eighth meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. First thing, Chair's remarks. We have an application that's not on the agenda. Let's see if we can make a motion. Stephen Rose is here. Make a motion to add it to the agenda as new business. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so we'll add that.
I wasn't sure I could vote. But I guess I can vote to add it to the agenda.
Okay, great. So approval of minutes. We've got the minutes from the three.
So, um, I'm curious just as as in.
Two, two twenty eight.
Hmm? Two twenty eight? What what?
Two twenty two.
I was absent, so I can't vote on it.
From the la- from last week? Wait, I don't think.
This is two weeks ago. It's not the special meeting we had last week.
This is, oh, it's, oh, okay. Oh, I see. But.
Did we get?
I thought we already did this, no?
No.
I think you did the eighteen.
We did.
The eighteen?
The one before this, which was the eighth.
The one before, okay.
Yep.
And then there's another, there's a, well, the three, the March first ones, right?
Mm-hmm.
You mean the joint here?
Yeah.
I did, I only, I, since it was ZBA primarily, I did include your stuff in the ZBA minutes.
Set it to them. Okay, got it. Very good.
This is all the.
Which I believe I copied you on that, on the draft of that, but I.
Okay.
Just for your information.
Okay, very good.
Michael, the, you know, I forgot to reply to you, but the email you sent to me didn't have the attachment.
Yeah, that's the one I had that didn't have the attachment, the three thir- the three one.
No, to Michael.
Oh, that's weird. Alright, I will resend it.
Okay. Okay, so let's, I guess we're doing the two twenty two. So, do we have, there's three of us here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so it's uh, twenty nine, thirty one, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, it's a certificate of approval. Let the, um, let the. The HJBS care person, right, and Bevan.
I should have got appropriateness.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oops, sorry, I have authority. Close.
I think the, the issue from Heffernan is partially mitigated. It's not mitigated. Thanks.
Um. Great, I was wondering about these. These are, um, they're, this is, this is sort of a description of what Karen and Glenn presented?
Yeah.
And then there's note about the one foot candle.
Yeah. Okay, so all I've got is a certificate of appropriateness, um, under the bullet point at the bottom of page one. The issue, I think that was the Heffernan property would be partially mitigated by defense. I don't think anybody says it's mitigated, um, because of his elevation. The, the second to last bullet point at the top of the next page, the bollard fixtures and building sconces. I'm just gonna put building, just so it's clear that they're, uh, sconces somewhere. And then, like Dave brought up, it's the one foot candles. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Which minutes are you going over?
Two twenty two, eighteen.
Okay.
Seconded?
Who moved? I'm sorry.
Seth.
Dave. Dave moved. Got a second?
Seth.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Oh, were you attending?
Okay. She wasn't here.
I wasn't there.
Um. Report of members. We, um, under board business, uh, we can discuss the, um, the Save a Tree report came back, which was the, um, the original arborist that had done the original assessment of the Copper Beach at Butterfield, which was a, um, an important aesthetic, uh, you know, village resource. That was protected in the plan. Um, it had a protection plan that was developed by an arborist. The arborist that did that assessment, did the plan, came back now that Butterfield, and Butterfield's arborist says the tree is beyond, um, any healthy growth and should be removed. So we have that letter. We can, I think we'll cover that under board business. Okay, okay. So, moving on. Correspondence? We got nothing actually. No. Um, new business. So, we've been asked by the zoning board of appeals, uh, to do an informal review of an application for Nine Morris Avenue. The reason why they're asking for an informal review is in our code, um, in the R one, the planning board has no, um, no authority to do site plan review and for an existing building in the R one. And this is obviously an existing building. So what they've asked is to at least just to, um, since this is what we do, right, to just say, you know, and the, the chair of the, the ZBA is here, Aaron Wolf has asked us to give an informal opinion, um, that, on this, on this application, so we can, so we can review that. Is someone going to present or?
I am.
Okay. I'll take this one. There's one back here, could you, if you need.
If we have one to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I have one. It has to be open. Yeah.
Okay.
This is the property I'm sorry.
Yep.
Just go. Can you all see?
Great.
Yeah, it's fine. Dave can turn on it. Okay. So, uh, this is right on Morris Avenue across from the library. We are representing, um, Nine Morris Avenue, which hopes to purchase the property. Um, what they want to do is put an office in this space. It is now residential. And so in order to do, put an office in, we would have to get a special use permit. Um, under the regulations, it is allowable or it's a philanthropic use. And this is supposed to be for a charitable organization. Um, however, some of the issues with it is that, um, in order for it to be used for office space, it needs two acres, uh, and we don't have two acres. Um, we also have some offset restrictions that allow it, that you'll have to get waived.
It's, it's point four acres, right?
For residential, I'm not sure.
No, the lot itself.
Of this lot. Oh.
It's a little under half, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, but you need two acres.
Right.
So, and then it also has, um, setback restrictions. For instance, it has fifty foot setbacks from the sidelines and the front, front line. In order for you to get a fifty foot setback from the sideline, this, this is actually the fifty foot setback for this line. And this is the setback for this line. You, you see the issue.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Starts with the two acres.
Yes, yes, okay.
And all flows from there. Or does it?
So, yeah. Um, we don't propose to do anything to the lot. We don't propose to do anything to the outside of the building.
What about the High Street curb cut?
We're not proposing to do any.
So it goes through the property.
Yes, it does go through.
It has, it has a curb cut there as well. It's, it's there.
And is there a driveway all the way through?
I think there's an old driveway. That, no, maybe not. Doesn't look like it.
There's a lot of shrubbery there or.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't, we don't plan to use the back entrance.
Okay.
I'm sorry, in fact, it's not heavy line at the top, the property line.
This line here, yes.
So that other house could fly out of the property line, or the garage?
Mm-hmm.
That, yeah, the garage. So, and not, not even changing the driveway?
Nope.
No?
In fact, um, under this, there is a, a section for how much parking you might need for that use. And it's kind of whatever's needed. So we picked four. The reason we picked four was because we could fit four spaces in without changing anything. We only have three employees. We figured four should cover it. Um, and you're going to use the whole house? I'm not sure about that. Yes.
Did you, what's the square footage of the house?
I.
The floor plates?
It's a small house.
Cause the, the only way we would have to calculate parking is by square footage. One space for a hundred and fifty on the first floor and one pair, one space per three hundred square feet on the upper floors. Which.
For, for no office?
For office, that's right. Yeah, we, unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of delineation in our code. It's office, retail.
For office space.
Medical office obviously is good in the R one. It's just not good in the business districts, unfortunately. But we're working on that in code update. For, for this, it would be one per one fifty on the first floors and then one per three hundred. Glenn says no.
There's a, there's a provision in the code for uses that aren't covered, and it's, it's what is necessary. And, and because of this particular use, I think we, we can cover that. The philanthropic, philanthropically, emotional category is one for every three beds, which, which is not applicable.
Sound applicable here, yeah.
If you go about two down in the, in the chart, there's one when, when you don't have, you can use this what makes practical sense kind of dump, uh, code, code issue.
No, I can see why you would choose that one.
Yeah, we really don't want to change the property. We want to use it the way it is. And it should cover all the employees that are there, so.
Three employees and then meetings?
Occasional meetings. Uh, but we were not, we've never planned to have more than maybe six people at a time there. It's not, it's not really meant for that use. It's really just meant for an office space.
And when the, when the circular drive is full, can you, can you accept deliveries? Can FedEx get through? Can UPS get through? Or is it, or is it obstructed?
No, it's not. You can get through even with the parking. Is, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, you can still get through. Now, this, I don't know how long you guys have lived from living here. I, I grew up here and I lived down there. Glenn's my father, I'm not supposed to say that. But, um, so, um, and I grew up right on Main Street. Um, and this used to be a funeral home. So it, it has been used for many visitors. And if you consider, I mean, if you really consider, I have, you know, two boys and a girl, and they all drive cars. And my husband and I have a car. And for residential purpose, I could easily see somebody having four cars in the lot. So four is, you know, restricting to four doesn't seem like an unreasonable amount.
The zoning, the, um, the funeral home, I assume, the funeral home used predated zoning, I assume?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah, so anything could happen back then, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Right.
There was a, there was a home, the people that ran the funeral home, Eaton, Charlotte Eaton, maybe some of you know Charlotte. She only passed away a few years ago. She's been very active in, in the historical society. Um, they lived there in, on the second floor.
Yeah.
And the funeral was on the first floor. And I think the bombing room and stuff was in the basement.
That's how they do it.
There's a, livable area is twenty four hundred feet.
The floor plates?
Livable area, yeah, the floor.
Oh, the whole of the floor, first and second?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So this is more than it was.
Okay.
Not a lot to comment on here if you're not changing anything.
Yeah, exactly. That's, we really did want to keep it that way. And they, the, the client, our client, Jonathan, was really, really like to be a part of the village and, um, and like the building. And it seemed like a nice fit.
Is there a reason why, um, a building that wouldn't require a variance wasn't considered? The piece in our building? I mean, buildings have been on the market. I mean, there are.
I, I think it's just a matter of time.
What he was shown and what he's seen, um, I, I just should add, just though, you know, this, this is a, this institution is called the Losman Foundation, which I, I mentioned to you before. The only principles of it are Jonathan Rose and his wife. So it's not like there's a big board of directors that's gonna come and congregate here. So, the meeting of the board and staff is gonna be five or six people.
Understood. Understood. So the, the question was whether or not there were all properties looked at. No?
No. I'm sure, I know he looked at, I know he looked at several, and I know he rejected, he rejected several.
So because this isn't a site plan, um, approval, um, there are things that we, there are sort of mechanisms that this board doesn't have available to it?
Well, we don't have any mechanisms available to us. So it's basically just, the, the ZBA would like just an informal opinion, since this is what we do.
Right.
And one thing that, you know, we look at is planning incompatible uses. I think the code is speaking very clearly and very loudly to say these are incompatible uses, and that that's the point of a two acre lot and a fifty, you know, and a fifty foot setback from the use because, because it's looking for a buffer zone. Um, you know, so it's, so the, the question is, you know, if you essentially eliminate that buffer, right? You're not talking about a ten percent reduction, a five percent reduction. You're talking about greater than seventy five percent reduction in lot size and really no setback, right, from the use. You're talking about probably a fifteen foot setback from the neighbor or?
Well, for this side, you're gonna get thirteen point six.
Yeah.
Uh, and this side, oh, no, that's not even the shortest. Cause we were talking about, we were actually talking about getting variances because of the parking.
Right.
So actually using a use, so this one is actually ten.
Right. So the, so we're just, we're just kind of, we're really just kind of talking informally. Obviously, Aaron's here listening. We're not putting anything in writing, obviously, cause it's informal. So, you know, he's kind, he's kind of asking, the, the zoning board of appeals is asking us to kind of give a, give our opinion, so we should speak freely as to what we see. I mean, what I see are, are the biggest thing, the biggest challenge. I mean, it's great, we want to be, you know, we want to get to yes. We want to get, you know, we certainly want to encourage not-for-profits coming in. The concern that I would have is just the precedent-setting nature of, you know, reducing, you know, I, I think the code oftentimes is murky and doesn't speak clearly. I don't think that is the case at all here. I think it says, you know, you know, you know, it, it's looking for a two acre lot, right? To actually put the, put the use in the middle of that, to buffer it from these other uses in the R one, which is obviously residential, to say it's, to say if it's incompatible. And the, and of course, a special use permit has to be renewed every year. But the reality of it is, is it would be pretty difficult to not renew it, right? Um, it would also be difficult to please, well, now there's four people, there's five people. Not saying that's happened, but we, you know, we, we approve applications all the time, and the reality turns out to be different. And things change as time, even with no misrepresentation and the best of intentions. I mean, obviously, the curb cut exists in the back, things can change back there as well. It's an as of right use. So I think that, I think that what I see is that there's the challenge of the precedent setting of just eliminating the buffer, which is the bulk requirement for the special, special use permit. Um, and when I watched the ZBA meeting, there wasn't a whole lot of talk about the, about the lot size and the varying, and the, and the, and the setbacks, which I was surprised, cause that's kind of the central issue to me because, because I feel it's so precedent-setting, right? In a way that, you know, if a hospital or sanitarium or whoever wants, also wants to move into a point four acre lot with a thirteen foot setback, yeah, we're gonna have to make the case about, okay, but this is different. There's, you know, there's a lot of beds, there's a lot of, you know, but it's a, it's kind of a slippery slope when you start to say, well, you've eliminated what is essentially the entire buffer and created a residential use. There's certainly the argument to be made that you're, that it is very similar to a residential use. That's certainly what's being presented to us, but, and, and that makes sense. But were that to change in any way, or were the experience of the neighbors to be different and residential? And residential's a, you know, a pretty wide gamut, to be fair. I mean, you know, I mean, uh, sometimes it's fences that make the best neighbors.
Well, right now, there is a business running in the building.
In?
Building. Now, there's a business running in the building. There is businesses running.
She's a, she's a medical practitioner.
Yeah, Christine.
And she sees patients.
And that's what.
You didn't even.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's an allowed home occupation, is it?
Sure it is. She's a, she's a healthcare professional.
Healthcare, is that?
Yeah.
Ah, yes, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Well, well, medical's allowed in the R one. I don't, but I don't think it's appro- I don't, I don't think it's gonna be for this board for that, to be honest.
Does she have approval for it?
We don't make homes.
So let's not.
It's, it's, it's a home, medical practice is allowed, it is, has the right.
Right, I think the question is, do they have the approval for it?
Yeah, definitely. Right.
They need the approval.
I think they need some type of site plan approval or?
I don't think so. I don't think there's a site plan approval requirement. But regardless, I mean, the, the kind of thing you're talking about could be handled with a condition, in terms of the number of employees that are in the special use permit. It's certainly the, um, intensity of the use.
But.
If, if, I agree with your idea that, that they were thinking of something else. Well, I, I, I'll correct it. I think they were thinking of something else when they wrote this special use permit. That's why the parking requirement for this kind of thing requires one space for each three beds. Uh, and I think that, that, that the, the use as a charitable institution, a very low-density charitable institution, doesn't present the kind of issues that, say, a hospital would or, or a school where you have drop-off and you have ports in the school and you have a patient parking, visitor parking, doctors in and out.
Right.
So it's, so.
But I, but, but, but the buffer helps to address that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and I think that's why the fifty foot setback, and I think that's why the two acre. And I think in that instance, that kind of thing makes sense. But I think the, the notion of a, a use that's no, probably actually less intense than a home, than a, than a five-bedroom home that's populated with two, two eight-year-old boys, it's gonna be a lot more activity around that site. Maybe, maybe more pleasant, but more activity.
Right. And, and as we all, and as we know, I mean, we don't, we don't really deal in the subjective. And the subjective could actually be different. It could be that they don't like that the place is dark at night, right? You know, that the neighbors are one, you know, I mean, so, you know, what the interpretation is, is really kind of open to, you know, people's, you know, people's own experience. We're just here to kind of look at the code and talk about what the code, what the code tells us, right? So I think that, yeah, with what's being explained to us, I think the day, you know, the daily use is, you know, is equal to, if not lesser than, or, you know, or somewhere in between from a residential use. I'm more concerned, I focus more on, on the, the setting of precedent and unintended legislative consequences of kind of making these decisions and, and looking down the road and saying, okay, now there's a, there's a hospital that says they're only gonna have three beds, right? You know, it's a some sort of special treatment facility, right, which gets everybody up in dogs, right? You know, so then you say, well, gee, I don't, you know, you know, I've got a treatment facility for three people, you know, and, and we're hard pressed to say, well, it's not any different, right? You have, you know, several employees, that obviously the, the patients probably wouldn't have vehicles. They'd probably be, they'd be patients, right? Um, so I don't know. It's just all those kind of things that we kind of, you know, want to kind of, cause obviously, a lot of planning is really looking far down the road, not really just kind of what's in front of us. I mean, the use seems, there's no question that what is being explained to us is similar to a residential use, other than the fact that it would be dark at night, dark on the weekends. You know, I don't know that that's, you know, the, you know.
Well, I think also, if, once, if you have a limit of three employees, that's gonna really limit, even if it does set a precedent,
Right.
it's gonna limit the next, next people who are gonna want the building. It just, it just will. That's, that's a tough.
Okay. Yeah, well, for us, we're really just gonna kind of give our opinion. The, the, the how to paper this and how to condition it is, you know, is gonna be with Aaron and his board. Um, but I think, go ahead. So if, we should have some more board discussion, whatever you guys think.
Yeah, I, I have a concern about past rulings that we've had and potential future ones. When I, as an applicant, can make the argument that this is an office. And if it's an office, then it's gotta have somewhere around eight spaces, alright? Cause I'm assuming that it's equal twelve hundred square feet on each floor. Alright? Now, we've ruled in the past on businesses, office spaces, based on the criteria that's set in here. Now, if those people come back and say, well, I only have, you know, two employees or three employees or whatever, you know, and you forced me into a situation and made me pay the village, you know, a fee for the parking.
But they wouldn't have to pay.
I want my money back.
They have plenty of land if, if they really did need to add space.
So now, so you want to advocate paving the backyard for a parking lot?
No, but I'm just saying your argument is really a mainstream.
Residential, well, then let's not.
Well, I think she's got a good point.
Then that gets into the buffer area too. Right? I mean, they have the buffer on the back portion of property.
You could easily put in half a dozen cars in the back and the neighbors wouldn't even see it.
Maybe so. We're part of the reason that we want to keep this, is we want to keep it the way it is. And, and by limiting the parking spaces,
Yeah.
then that, that kind of, and I understand what you're, what you're saying. I definitely get that, but, um.
I, I'm coming from the viewpoint of spending my life driving through dead upstate New York villages, where you've got these big old, you know, no longer viable properties that are beautiful. And they fall into disrepair, they end up being, you know.
This is not a distressed property. It isn't occupied.
I know. I know. But the point is that this is a really good.
And it's, and it's not a mansion. It's twenty four hundred square feet. It just looks.
This is a really good use of a big mains, uh, you know, main drag property.
It may be, but not here. And not under this code. I mean, I concur with, with you. Yes, that may be, but not here in, in the situation that we're talking about. I don't think.
It's across the street from the library.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, their house is across the street from the library. I, um, I would like to contribute to this discussion.
Craig House is, you know, is the typical use, right? You know, I mean, that, you know, the sanitarium. And those are the ones you really kind of come up with a use for. This one is a, it's, it's a residential. I mean, twenty four hundred square feet is not.
Yeah, but it's, it's not an affordable housing. But they're gonna do affordable housing from it.
No, well, no, no.
They might. They might.
I think, wasn't that for you a definition of the?
I don't think they're doing affordable housing. They're in land conservation and.
There was a, um, well, Jonathan Rose is all about affordable housing.
He might be.
Well, this is a different foundation. It didn't say that in the.
It, there was a term, remember Laura?
Someone in the century.
Yeah, I had never heard that before, but it's.
Right, right, but in the description, in this, they're saying kind of what they're doing, which is.
It's affordable housing. Oh, I'd like to read that.
The zoning code, I think, is, says that that's if you do affordable housing, you can be one of the special, one of the uses if you have two acres and all the setbacks. Uh, I, I just wanted to contribute that, um, the reason I was asking about, you know, I was drawing attention to the fact that we, there isn't, this isn't a site plan review and there are sort of no mechanisms to have sort of better, like, sort of oversight over the eventual use of the property. Cause the backyard is very big and there is this curb cut at the back. And, um, and I think, well, if, if I owned the property and I had this permit and I had, oh, and I needed, I was experiencing pressure for, for parking and my business was growing and, oh, this is great. Nobody can deny me, my business is growing, I'm contributing to the economy and I need more parking, oh, I'm gonna have to look to my backyard and, you know.
But it's gonna not-for-profit approval.
Judith's paving it.
I'm paving it.
So, anyway, and I, and I, I'm concerned about that because it is, it is a, it is a, I don't want to be.
Hey, paradise.
Listen, I don't, I don't really understand. Your, your concern that we, if we have a special use permit that only limits four cars.
It does, right. But I guess my, my thinking is though, is if business is good.
Yes.
It makes it difficult to legislate somebody's business success down the road. Once, once the building is in, or once, once the, once a business is in and up and running.
It's a foundation. It's not a business. It's a family foundation.
It's a business.
It's a business.
They're asking for a commercial office space.
It may be a foundation, but anyway. So there's an enterprise, and my concern is that.
And then if they sell it, then the special use has been granted for a commercial office.
Once this. Once this change occurs, it will be.
No, that's, that's not true.
Well, it's been, it's, a pattern has been established. Absolutely, come on.
Well, first of all, the, the.
I feel conservative about the application. Thank you for your presentation. I thought you did a very nice job. I feel conservative about the application. Thank you for your presentation. I thought you did very nice, John. There, I'm done.
I'm done.
The idea, the idea of a special use permit is for, is to provide you, I can't speak to whether it's precedent in setting or not in a, in, as a matter of law, but, but the idea of a special use permit in those zones like that is so that you get to each look at these kind of uses each time and see how they affect the, the law, the, the neighborhood and this.
Right.
And it's, it's, it doesn't happen automatically. You have a one-year renewal, so if you see, so if you, so if you, so you, so if you see that all of a sudden they employ ten people, you don't renew. You have a condition that has to be limited to four parking spaces and if you see put in another, somebody puts in another parking lot, they probably at that point would need a site plan approval, but even if they didn't, you, you, you could violate them. So, so there's, so there's mechanisms available to control that special use, that conditions being such.
Right, and your ability to use those mechanisms goes back to the first point. If you've set a precedent, you may have a problem, right? That's the concern. Right? That would be my concern and I don't.
I'll tell you what happens with me. Every time I, every time I go in on this end of the thing, people say, well, we're afraid of setting a precedent. And every time I go in and say, you know, you did this for somebody else, and here's the point, and they say, yeah, but that's not a precedent.
Oh.
That was different.
He's telling the truth.
You'll distinguish it if you want to.
I don't, I don't know if you've heard that here.
What is, what is your fear here? Is your fear that it's gonna turn into Walmart?
It's exactly as I stated, which is that it's precedent, right? First of all, you've eliminated, you've eliminated the buffer. Do you understand what the buffer is for?
I understand what the buffer's for.
And the buffer's, and you agree that it's gone. It's essentially a residential setup.
Nothing is changing about that setup, from going from a medical office with lots of people coming and going all day long.
I don't know that that's the case. And first of all, we've never approved that, so I, we're not calling it a medical office. There are a lot of things that go on in the village.
But it is the medical office.
Well, first of all, she's a solo practitioner. I don't know how many people she sees.
She probably has a dozen patients a day, or half a dozen.
I really don't think that we can speculate about her.
I know.
And also too, it's not an approval. It's not, I don't believe, I don't believe it's ever come before us. Aaron?
Matt, can I make sure if my computer dies that I get the, um, some specific questions in front of you?
So I think, yeah, go ahead.
So, we would be, we talked about parking, you talked about parking a little bit. We're gonna be asked to make a specific recommendation for parking, to set a limit if this goes through.
Yeah, and I don't know that I would say for spaces. I would say not to alter, not to alter the parking configuration, to leave the semicircular drive, to leave the residential feel of the structure, right? I don't, you, you can tell, I'm not, you know, I'm not hiding any cars. I don't, I don't support the application. I think it's, I think it is a, I think it sets bad precedent. But if you were to do it and you wanted to do it, I would say to not alter the residential feel, to leave the semicircular drive, to not do what Member Rose is suggesting is pave the backyard.
What you're saying is don't change, we're not giving the change of the site plan.
So the residential experience doesn't change, because you're offering them no buffer, and I don't think it's reasonable. If we are supposed to be here enforcing the code and making sure that it's a two-acre lot with a fifty-foot setback, you have, you as the person that is next to them, have every reason to believe that we will do that, right? There, people could say we failed to do that. So if you, if you at least don't change the experience, right?
Yeah, one thing that we haven't seen on the site plan yet, which I think you would probably ask for would be to see the parking spaces marked out originally under the code.
That works for me.
Yeah, they're on their cars if we, if we even advise their park.
But the, the actual area, the borders of each parking space.
There, there are spots. There's pretty details.
Well, yeah, I don't think, I don't.
There are lines on here.
Hold on. What, what Aaron's speaking to is a legal parking space. Our parking space is our massive in the code. That's not a parking space in, in the village of Cold Spring. That's a car.
No, there's lines.
Well, there's lines on there.
There are lines.
That are set exactly to the, to ours. What is, what's our space again? Eleven by seventeen or some crazy number?
Hundred and sixty-two square feet.
The legal length of the parking spot.
But I don't, but you don't really need, I don't think you really need that on residential, to be honest. I mean, I, I.
There's flexibility again, because this is kind of a unique situation.
Yeah.
And then the, um, the exit for the parking has to be nine feet. It looks like nine feet to me, but I can't see where the edge of the parking spot is on, on the site plan.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about.
So, what I think has to happen is from the, from this edge, the leap, once you have your area, you need nine feet to the, the edge of the driveway here, which is undefined. It's all kind of gravelly terrain, it's into grass.
Yeah, and, and code enforcement should look at that as well, because you, I, I would think you would want fire lane, you would want, you know, I, I would imagine there's something about emergency vehicles coming in while, you know, and not being blocked. You know, because if you're really gonna turn this thing into a commercial office, then it has to comply with code, so.
Do you have any, anybody on the board or have concerns about traffic going in and out of ninety during, um, beginning and end of business?
I don't think it's any different than a resident entering and exiting.
Anybody working there will have the same problem that people living there.
Yeah, it's, it's, you don't try to leave when school's out.
Or when people are driving their children to school.
Are you aware of any other applications ever for this use in Cold Spring? Special permit?
To, to set aside, do an area variance that eliminates the buffer and ask for a commercial, no.
Or even for the special permit?
A special use permit?
For this?
Well, I mean, Butterfield predated, both of them predated zoning. So we can talk about, oh, this used to be, lots of things used to be, it used to give x-rays for acne. I mean, you know, we don't, we don't give radiate, we don't do that anymore. So things are different, right? I mean, and zoning came into place and zoning said, okay, let's try to keep, you know, let's keep the shooting ranges away from the elementary schools and the, and the bars, away from whatever, and so, so obviously zoning came in. I'm not aware of, um, I'm not aware of anybody asking to, since I've been here, anybody asking to change a, a, an R1 to office.
And are we, are we aware of any other non-resident, non-home occupation offices in R1 that are unprophetic or otherwise?
Not that I'm aware of.
There's probably like home occupations, but any.
But our home occupations are from the thirties. I mean, it's milliner, you know, hatmaker, seamstress, you know, medical. I mean, they, they really need to be updated with respect to.
There's a few around there. I know a couple of people, interior designers, architects, engineers.
Attorneys.
Those are home occupations?
Yeah, and they work primarily by themselves.
Yeah, I'm asking about non-home occupations, because this won't be a home occupation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see. So where the, where the residential building is occupied instead by an office. There is a building on Lower Main that has a sign at something or other hospice, but I don't ever see anybody go.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I know, I know the, the, the house next to me on the prior owner was running a business out of it and had applied, but I mean, I don't, I don't think it was ever approved.
Oh, but that's B. Sorry, that's the, that's.
She was a wholesale distributor.
And that's also down Lower Main is B.
That's B1.
B1, B1, sorry. So that, no, I'm still walking streets of the building.
Okay.
And the application obviously reduces, you know, the housing stuff, right?
Oh, yes, by twenty-four hundred square feet.
Large drafty mansions that you can't find owners for.
There are large.
I think you should quote that part. That would be helpful.
No, this is, this is Member Rose's, uh, argument.
I like Member Rose.
Exactly, you should. She's your, she's your favorite member.
Too many buildings like this fall into disrepair. Fall into disrepair and, and they're, they need to have new lives.
They do.
Because they're no longer appropriate for a two or three-family person household.
True.
The vocors never should have bought it. We'll let them know.
Well, the vocors wanna sell it.
Yeah.
But that, that depends on the economic area you're in. I mean, I'll give you a good example.
Yes, I realize that we're in a very special little bubble.
Yeah.
However.
And they're taking beautiful care of the day.
Well, there's more, there's more areas similar too. I mean, a friend of mine worked on a house, fifty thousand square feet. Husband and wife, no kids.
Fifty thousand square foot house?
No kids.
That's like an office.
Wait, that's more than fifty.
On the sound, so.
I know.
It's a whole other little house.
I, I think, if I were making a suggestion to the zoning board, I would definitely, um, make sure that there was a lot of public input from the, all the neighbors of the area, because they are the ones that we're concerned about. And, and do your research on, on the precedents. You know, we're just talking off the top of our heads here. We really don't know what the ramifications could be.
Because the big thing, the big thing is to be very clear in the resolution, in my mind too, that they're extenuating circumstances, right? That it's, if you wanna do this, right? That, you know, that it's because of the way they're gonna use it, but then that has to be conditioned, right? That has to be, and it doesn't change. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't in my mind mean, oh, you need more cars, pave the backyard and, you know, start coming in on High Street. It doesn't mean, you know, business is great, you know, which is, which is fantastic. But there are, there are buildings that are already zoned for that, right? And there are buildings that are, you know, that also need to be loved as well, right? I mean, there's the, the P C R building was restored.
There's a lot of opportunity.
There's one that's, there's one, there's one I can think of that's gone now, but the Montessori school.
Yes, that did need love.
And that started after this zoning was in place.
Which?
The Montessori school.
The Dr. Hall?
Yeah, the Hall, Dr. Hall.
That was a, that was a school, Montessori school. I don't know if you lived there or not.
How big's that lot?
But it's, but it's, uh.
It's big.
That's a huge lot. The setback in the back isn't there though, because it's right up against.
It's not two acres.
But it's probably at least, it's probably over an acre though, right?
Yes, it is over.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know if it is or not.
No, I think it is.
It was subdivided, it was subdivided some time ago. It was, originally it was bigger.
Right.
And I don't know, I don't, can't speak to when it was subdivided.
But there's nobody to the left or the right either.
Certainly not two acres.
Yeah, but there's nobody to the left or the right. You know, I mean, we talk about extenuating circumstances and being flexible, which we wanna be.
But that was a business in a residential zone that started and stopped subsequently. Within, within the period that's been zoning.
Zoning was in effect.
And this is, despite your insistence, this is not a business.
It must have been a doctor's office.
It's not a business?
It's not a business.
What is it?
It's a foundation office.
It's a charitable.
Wait, wait.
The non-residential use. Let's agree to that.
But it's also not a commercial use.
If it's not, but if it's not residential, it's not residential. I mean, that's really, that's really the only clarification that we need to make.
And I, I do wanna just clear up one thing. And you keep talking about, you know, I respect your question about wanting to, you know, whatever you want, put more cars in the back, and I can understand where that's coming from. But, for instance, okay, let's just go to the practical part of this, and I know where you're coming from too. But if this were somebody's home, right, this were my home, and I had my three kids parking and I had a party, I'd think nothing of it and, and honestly, all of the, as my neighbors, we maybe complain, but zoning would not come down on me because I was.
Because you were the resident.
Because I was a resident, right?
It's a residential use, yeah.
Whereas here, you have the opportunity to see it every year and lease it every year.
Oh, no, no, I hear you. And, and it's very clear, what you're explaining to us could be even more manageable and less impactful. Assuming the dark nights and weekends aren't kind of, you know, it's not kind of, you know, I mean, yeah.
They already live next to an old funeral home.
That's been lit for years. Full of, full of sun.
Exactly.
Full of a very colorful family. This is not a funeral home anymore. If it is, it's the Addams Family.
Anyway.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Our clients would really like to move in, so I respect everything.
Thanks, and we're just here, obviously just to, yeah.
Did we give you what you wanted to hear, Erin?
Yeah.
That, that we have no consensus for you.
What do you mean? Three to one? That's not a cons, you are aware of what a majority is, right?
I say consensus.
Oh, consensus. We don't need consensus. This isn't the Senate. We don't need a supermajority.
I wonder, I wonder if there's a way for, for, to get this into the zoning board publicly, whether it would be appropriate to have a memo or a letter or something.
Uh, you could just.
I think if it's informal, it should be informal. I don't.
Copy the minutes, make sure the Z D A members can use a copy of the minutes and they can draw whatever conclusions they want from the various comments.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna pin an opinion and write it, because then obviously it's, uh, it's just that.
We started this conversation saying it was an informal conversation. I mean, clearly, if we'd known it would be formal, I would have done whatever Matt said.
Oh, come on. You're supposed to do whatever you think's right.
One of the other things.
What's that?
Sorry?
I think there's a required referral on, either the variance for the special use permit.
Yes, on the special use permit.
I think there's a required referral.
So, but it would come back to us after they'd make the determination?
No, you could do it before.
You would have to do it before, I would think.
To do what?
The referral for your opinion is a formal.
Just to get your recommendations now, whether you wanna formally issue a, a letter with your recommendations or you can just do it informally by passing on the minutes.
Okay.
But it, okay.
It's, you know, I don't know.
Should we, should we be clear about who would approve, who would disapprove? Is that what we're talking about?
It, it's up to you. I mean, sometimes you could, sometimes I've seen it where the board will say, you know, three members were concerned about X, Y, and Z, you know, and one member thought it was, you know, was in favor because of A, B, and C. You could do that if you wanted to. Or you can just give the zoning board the minutes and say, here that.
Yeah, Erin, I think you're clear on where, where this, how this falls out with the board, or at least the four that are here.
Well, on specific points.
Would it be more helpful for you to say, if, if we were voting on this, whether we thought up or down?
I, I don't, um, I wouldn't necessarily vote on it. I would just say.
No, it's an if.
Board members, you know, three board members have such and such concerns.
I, I guess what I'm looking for is something that I can share with the board and the public at the hearing, so that everybody will know what the planning board was thinking. And we could read the minutes in, or if you wanted to send a summarizing memo, maybe that would work.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
When?
And we'll probably, I'll just circulate with the board and get the board's approval, because obviously I don't wanna be, it shouldn't be my voice.
When?
It's in one week.
Rose can write it.
Exactly. All good.
Two-point views, just make sure both are expressed.
The thing is, is that they're in a, they're required in a week, next week. So, um, so having it written, submitted to us for review and approval is, we have a short amount. I'm not sure if that, that changes.
Why you're gonna write?
No.
That you're hoping to write? No, it's fine. I mean.
So, the code says that as a condition of our approval, we would require a site plan approval.
But I think we don't have, I don't, I think we'd have right to site plan review on existing buildings in the R1.
But we don't even, we don't.
I don't, is it?
It says for a new building.
And nothing is changed.
Site plan approval says, specifically says for a new building.
Yeah.
And I think under the special use criteria, it says how you're gonna review the site plan.
It does. I'm, I'm looking at, just so we can figure this out, I'm looking at one thirty-four sixteen G three D. Oh, wait, um, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
Oh.
It's probably one thirty-four sixteen B. Required plan, a plan for proposed development shall be submitted with the application, with a special use permit. Such plans shall show the location of all buildings, parking, traffic, circulation, and blah, blah, blah. I mean, that's basically a site plan.
That's what, that's what they submit.
So, it doesn't officially say it needs site plan approval from the planning board, but it says you have to approve a site plan. So, that's why it's kind of before the planning board, so you get their recommendations. That's, that's what you guys do. It's, it should be fixed. I mean, this is, you have a code committee. This is something that should be cleaned up, because it should have a formal site plan.
Yeah.
Anything non-residential should have a formal site plan approval.
Okay, so I just wanna, I just wanna be clear here. It is the, it is incumbent upon, not the planning board here, but the zoning board, to conduct a site plan approval. Or a site plan, sorry, review.
As part of the special use per, or special permit approval.
So we're clear then that we don't send this back to the planning board?
No, we don't.
Okay.
This is a one shot.
That's what I wanted to be.
I have a quick question before we get all this checked all together. Is it going to be just the foundation, or is there gonna be residential on the upper floors?
No. No, no residential.
There, I thought there was a one.
They have an emergency bed, they have an emergency, they have a bedroom for snow, like last night. If they get an employee sucked there, they have a bed that an employee could stay overnight, but it's gonna, that's, that's it.
So they're gonna take turns?
Is there a kitchen?
They have three people there with a floor bed.
That is way too much information.
I imagine there's a coffee mess kinda place, but I don't.
Well, you know, it's not a site plan as before, so I.
And for this non-residential use, which we shall not call commercial.
Or a business.
It, what, what happens with respect to code enforcement, right? Exit signs, sprinklers, ingress, egress?
Yeah, so when they submit their building permit, they're gonna have to meet a classification under the state code. That is for basically an office, I don't know what they're classified as. So that's something that I think we talked about the zoning board meeting a couple of weeks ago is, you know, you're gonna have to meet the state code because it's no longer residential, and there's different classifications and requirements when you have non-residential as opposed to residential. And even different commercial uses or non-residential uses have different classifications. But that's for the building inspector and the architects to.
No, but just as we look at broader life safety things that we just like to call out, is the building currently sprinkler? There's a third floor, there's a, a built out third floor, correct? Is it sprinkler?
I don't, I don't believe it's sprinkler.
How do you know that? That man, a medical office.
What's going on here? I think if it's a third floor and has a, two means of egress and is residential, it doesn't need to be sprinkler.
I think any occupied space on a third floor requires sprinkler now in New York State. If it's finished.
Now?
Yeah.
That's fairly recent.
No, not that recent.
All you needed to have was too mean to egress.
No, that changed, that changed quite a while ago. If it's, if it's finished space.
Third floor new construction is required.
And even, and even alterations. I know it came up with a, with a house on our block. There was an office in the attic, it requires, you gotta, you gotta sprinkler the whole house.
Yeah, but this has probably been a while.
Right.
Regardless, it's an issue for the building inspector and the architect to hash out.
I got a quick question. But I just, but, but just before we kind of close, the, you know, the, they're gonna have to apply an office standard to this, right? When they do this, they're gonna have to, it's, it's gonna be treated as commercial space. Cause obviously we look at, you know, larger life safety issues. Obviously, people getting in and out requires lighted ingress and egress and sprinklers and all these things. And I'm sure their employees would appreciate that, and I'm sure they would want to make them safe, I mean.
Yeah, I'm assuming, I mean, I'm, I'm not a building inspector, but whatever the code requires, he's gonna have to edit a minute.
I got a quick question. It says existing violations, no prematurely issued for a special use for a property, that there is an, that there is an existing violation of this chapter. Theoretically, isn't that the case? If there's a medical office in there.
Glenn is actually right, I don't think the home occupation uses, I think they're permitted as of right.
As of right, in the R one.
So I mean, that doesn't mean they still, they should, should still have a building permit.
Right.
For that home occupation use. But let's just say, even if they don't have a building permit for that home occupation use, is it a violation? No, it's not a violation until the building inspector actually issues a violation. But it would be kinda moot.
And I guess confirm, you should condition too, that there's no existing violations up on the building. I mean, I don't know how well, how good the file is anyway, but.
Well, that violation would be moot anyway, if assuming it's approved, because it's no longer gonna be used as a home occupation.
No, I'm saying other violations. If there's on, violations haven't been cleared for whatever reason.
Yeah, theoretically, if there are violations on record, the building inspector shouldn't issue any building permits.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any final comments? Going once, going twice? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Imagine member Rose is accusing herself on this one, since it's got her name on it.
Judith's studio.
No, no, not mine. You can come up here.
Okay.
Do you need to run this one, or is this?
Oh, that's just a, you have a studio, a, an accessory building.
So this is a four unit subdivision.
Oh, the resolution, should we do the resolution?
You're gonna pay for a backyard?
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, actually, can you hold on one second? You can stay seated, we'll just, we'll do the resolution.
I was just joking.
We're gonna do this resolution before John leaves.
And Matt, before we start, I need the name of the property, his information.
Nine Morris Avenue?
No, no, this gentleman here.
Oh.
When you get to him.
Yep. It's Rose Art Studio, seven Marion Avenue.
Are we doing, we're doing the resolution on one twenty-six?
Yeah. Jen, Jen John's gonna take on.
Okay. All right, once upon a time, are you reading it aloud, or are we just reading it and then voting on it?
Uh, if you just read it, just to see if it, if it complies with the safety, if everyone's gonna be reading.
Site plan is pretty small here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, there's still something. Thanks for the.
Thank you.
Well, we're gonna add anything about the, no. We decided that we didn't wanna add any access, official access to the front. So it was really just the lights and the stormwater.
That's what I had in my notes.
Well, I'm trusting that all the whereas's are correct.
That I'm confident in.
Oh, good.
The conditions are important, I'm sure we get the language right.
I think it's, it's what, this is what I was expecting, what do you guys think?
It is, I just wanted to confirm that we both.
I can't comment. What? My name's not on it.
Who's the al, yeah, I was just sure who the alternate is, cause you had everybody's.
Dave is the alternate.
Oh, yeah, Dave's the alternate, yeah.
Right, so when you have everyone here, I'm sorry, Dave.
That's all right.
Oh, Sue isn't here, right? Neither is Lara. Oh, can, did the alternate?
But you had everybody here, so.
Can the, can Dave vote on this?
Yeah, you, you, you guys could, all you're doing is just allowing Matt to sign.
Oh, okay, all right.
You've already approved it.
My question is, I just wanted to confirm that the reference to the removable panel in the back fence was being applied to the, was already on the site plan?
It's on, she said it's on the site plan, yeah. But we're not requiring that. We're not getting into that, that's, that's between the neighbors, I mean.
Yeah, we, we thought, we decided that that wasn't gonna be our thing.
That was one of my, oh, no, no, I'm not talking about, I'm actually, this isn't regarding Phil Heffernan's request for a easement. She, she had.
A removal panel in the fence, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, but she's doing that because of Phil. Because of her conversations with Phil, and the vill, and we said we're gonna stay out of that. If the village needs access to back road, or Phil needs access to her property, they both go to her, not the planning board on, on their behalf.
Oh, okay, all right, I have, I thought.
Or as a third party.
I thought that the discussion had sort of left Phil, and then had become a discussion about.
She was willing, I believe, I, I didn't get close enough to look, I mean, we have it in there. But I believe she said there's a note on the plan that she's gonna do a removable panel.
That's what she did say.
Oh, okay, great.
I don't know that we can enforce that, I mean, it's, you're not required to have a removable panel in the fence. But if she decides to do it and put it on there, I don't know if she doesn't do the removable panel, I would not say that that gives Phil or anybody else the right to come back and say the site plan isn't compliant. Cause code doesn't require removable panel in the fence, agreed?
No, only if the village really needed it, and there's no indication that the village needed it, they have other access.
But that's just separate. But the village needs to request it, yeah. The village needs to request it, yeah. The legislative body needs to request it, yeah.
Okay, okay, fine, yep, okay, sorry.
So we can accept it as is?
I think so.
Took a motion to accept.
I move we accept it.
Yeah, the only thing is, I didn't know, I forgot who, who made the motion and you seconded it at the meeting last week. But you could always just fill that in.
I don't know.
All right, so we'll have to, oh, you, oh, you got it.
It might have been me, I might have moved it.
Or you could just.
You could, can you send us the three one minutes?
You could just make it up now, just go in and do it.
Those are the ones that weren't attached, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, and then we'll, and then we can do it. Assuming with the condition that obviously we put the correct member making the motion and seconded by, can we have a motion to accept the, the resolution of approval for one twenty-six Main Street as written?
I move we accept it as written with the condition filling in.
And a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Oh, I.
All right, very good, all right, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You sound like you need to go home and feel better.
Yeah, I, actually, I felt better than I did last week. I don't know if you guys noticed, I almost hacked up a lung last week's evening.
Sorry, I didn't notice.
Oh, I didn't notice either.
I was sort of excited.
I wouldn't have sat so close. Thanks, John, feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an application in front of us, oh, we don't, do we have an application? Oh, yeah, there is an application now. For Rose Art Studio on seven Marion Avenue, it's an accessory building, construction of an, I actually wanted to just explain the project to us.
Sure. By the way, so we lucked into a property, in case you're wondering why, how we got so much land, the realtors weren't even aware of how much land went with this house. They didn't really know it until we, we'd actually started making inquiries with the realtor. So we got this big L-shaped property, it goes down to Kemble, from our home on Marion. Man, don't think we got, we spent much on this, it was amazing. Anyway, just establishing my class status.
I was trying to show them that.
Yeah, okay, so this is this big L-shaped, we have this big L-shaped property, and so I'm hoping to build this art studio down there. Not too close to Kemble, set back a bit, keeping a kinda natural landscaping around it. And no parking. It's really about walking down to it from my house, there's no, I'm not, I'm not, vehicle acc, the builder is gonna have to get in there with a, some kind of lift truck with a lift on it to, cause he's, he's pre-making. There, there will be pre-made.
Modules.
Panels?
Panels.
Oh, okay.
And newber, and.
Of all places.
But that, as James says on, James wrote that application, it'll be returned to a national state then at the end. We're gonna leave a lot of trees, so it's, it's not a.
And there's no curb cuts back there, right?
There's no curb.
He's gonna have to get in there, but there's no curb, yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to, I, I, I wanna bury the power from, there's a pole in the corner, this, this corner here. I'd like to bury the power, and of course, we'll have to have water and sewer from Kemble.
Oh, it's gonna have a.
Toilet.
It will have water and, yeah. It, it's not a living space, it's a, you know, slop sink and a, and a toilet. And the drainage won't be changed because the up hills, this is a, this is a slope. I don't know, you probably know that, it's a slope, but it's at the point where I'm, where we're making it, it's not too steep. But it'll be on piers, well, yeah, piers. James has this, you probably know about this helic coil or something that.
Helical pylons?
Yeah.
Helical pylons, yeah.
Yeah, so it's sort of minimal site disturbance, and the uphill side will be, there'll be an opening there. So it's, it's not gonna stop flow of, of water downhill. And we're not really, we're not, the, the, the street side is the side, we're not really making it too inviting. Well, we don't want it to be that. There's no like, no, there's no obvious, there's gonna be a deck on the street side, but no double door. But there's no like steps or.
Because it's an unoccupied building, we don't want it to be attractive.
Yeah. I don't know if that's important to you. So the windows are on the uphill side, and the double doors in the guy, I guess that's not important to planning. I forget.
Long day, what are we reviewing here? I mean, with respect to an accessory building?
Oh, the code just says.
Cause there's no driveway.
The planning board has to give its approval. It doesn't say what you would be approving, because there's nothing to approve.
Well, I don't know if that's, I mean, it, wouldn't this be, I mean, are we, are we, are we approving a, are you, have you presented us with a site? Are you presenting us with a site plan?
That's basically it, that you're approving the site plan, but since there's no parking.
Right.
Or drain, probably a drainage issue.
Or it's, there's nothing that's gonna be impacting the public right away, or the neighbors.
That is a good point, how do you, how are you dealing with the, with the stormwater runoff?
It's, nothing's gonna change.
It's gonna, it's gonna be supported on piers, so whatever's draining down now, with the exception of the pier itself, is gonna drain underneath it.
And it'll just end up in the ditch the way it is now.
And, or is it, um.
Actually, the water from Marion Avenue and Food Town ends up on this property.
That's the biggest planning issue.
It comes all the way down Marion Avenue, goes down Wall Street, then goes back down Kemble to this property.
Has this gone, do, I guess, do you guys go before the historic district review board?
So that's next Wednesday.
What about offsets to the property line, no issues there?
It's always.
You're within the code.
We're within the envelope.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a period.
It's sixty-one feet, seventy-seven feet, thirty-nine feet, those, yeah.
Now, if you were gonna put it in a permanent driveway, we'd have to, you know, that would be a site plan issue.
And what, what are you doing in it that you don't need any, any access to the road?
It's an art studio.
It's just, it's paintings.
Paints?
I mean, if I wanna take a painting out of there to a car on Kemble Avenue, I can, I mean, I, I, we've always had a little trail there, that's all I need.
Yeah.
It's, it's nothing.
Oh, this is, I think I, I thought it was for you and your stones.
It's for him.
No stone carving here?
No stone carving, no, no, no.
Incompatible uses.
Very incompatible.
Dustin oil tanks.
Yeah.
Is this picture number six, the five inch Galvalume half round gutter and downspout, is that actually the gutter and downspout that is a half round? It has a sort of like a shape to it, O G molding, shapy. Is that what you're using?
Well, I should tell James that, cause you are correct.
That does not look like a half round.
That's no half round gutter.
I know half round gutters, and that's not half round.
Very good, yeah.
You cannot get anything by this.
Very good, that's.
Well, you could probably get a lot of things by me, but I guess not that.
That's excellent editing.
I know that there's a lot of concern with like the accessory buildings being occupied, and you're putting water and heat in this.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, wow, I'd like to live there.
There will be water and heat.
I was like, that's a really cool spot, I'd like to live there.
Yeah, it's not, it's meant for paint, for painting. No shower, no kitchen, just toilet and the, the double sink.
Painting studio has to have water.
But it will be, it will have electricity.
Gonna have water, you might as well put in a toilet.
And James, you know, James has all the, Ja, James, you know, is thinking about a single unit heating, energy exchange, energy, energy exchange, that heats, cools, and ventilates. You know, and exchanges, you know, changes the heat.
Right.
Are these three foot, how, how thick are the walls? Are these three foot, how thick are the walls?
They're pretty thick, yeah. They're all thick. It's what I like a foot. It's like a double wall construction. They're thick.
But are we renting out to Airbnb? No.
No.
The, the, the lack of the washing, being able to wash and cook definitely would slow down most of course.
No, but typically what makes them, I will tell you what makes them nervous, and it did it even to mine, just that the garage had power, right? You know, that it's getting a sub panel, you know, that you're, when you, once you put water in, they're like, well, I don't take much of a shower, I don't take much, you know.
Well, and, but who is that?
Who's that?
Yeah.
The zoning board appeals.
Oh, well, he doesn't have to go to the zoning.
Well, oh, so we, so we should do it here, you're saying?
No.
So we should be.
It's not, it's not your issue.
Alright, well, we'll decide that.
Yeah, I know that the Sigler Hendersons were prohibited from running electricity to their shed because it was feared to be an eventual.
Yeah, that has been inconsistent throughout the village because they're very concerned about occupancy of these accessory structures because it's been a real problem. You know, that they're, that they're not, they're not, you know, they're not really even up to code with respect to.
So the Linky's right next to us have power to their accessory structure.
It doesn't make a right.
No, 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 yeah, no, that's the whole, yeah, no, that's the whole, that's the whole, the argument about, yeah. But her emails. But her emails.
Her emails, the emails they wrote. Okay, so are we?
I don't, yeah, I don't know what.
Are we, so do we put, oh, this is here. Is this your property, is this your property contract? Is that what this is? Well, it was in the application that we had to have our deed. Oh, I don't remember. He was reading that application that we created. And, and the, the signing it, it was a little odd, but we went and got a copy of the title.
Wow.
Because you requested it.
It looked like three signatures on that.
Alright, well.
So how is that controlled?
God bless you.
Pardon me. How is what?
The concern of occupancy of accessory structures, I mean, I guess this is a code enforcement issue, right?
It is a code enforcement issue.
Yeah, okay.
So if we sold this to someone who wanted to have, who wanted to live there.
Oh, they'd have to come back to the planning board. Or meet the code enforcement officer every time they came out, they'd use the shower. As soon, as soon as they wanted a kitchen and shower, they'd have to get a building permit and that would be refused until they came back and went through the boards all over again. And anyone living in it would also want more windows, so they'd be. So naturally no one would want to live, I wanna, I'm looking at it, I want to live there. It's cute.
Yeah. James is pretty interesting.
Oh, as a designer, yeah. But the roof was mild. Are you gonna put like a rain, a rainwater catch?
Uh, yeah, yes, I definitely want to capture that.
So I can water the gardens down. So you can water the gardens or down the wildflowers that you put down there. That's another reason why we wanted water, so that I could have, water my wildflowers.
Yeah, for landscaping.
What's the footprint of it?
It's eighteen by, you mean dimensions?
Yeah.
Eighteen by thirty? Or twenty by thirty-two probably? Oh, plus the deck.
But the inside is smaller. Eighteen by thirty. I know, I know. I think I can fit my house in there. I know, I feel the same way. I know, because I see here on the map, you could just go down.
Yeah, eighteen by thirty is the structure, plus the deck is another.
The deck, oh, that doesn't include the deck?
That does not.
That's a very much.
That's a huge structure.
Eighteen by thirty?
These illustrations are not to scale.
I think it is.
They aren't to scale, it's a big property.
Let's know.
Right, these little, you know, the interjection of the. I read it, it's like set way far away. Our frontage on Kemble is two hundred feet. Thirty-one, wow. I have a really small house.
Or a good-sized studio.
I have a very good-sized studio. It's very well-appointed. It has a shower and a kitchen. It has a shower, a kitchen and a, including a dishwasher.
What is this, this picture, is this, what is that?
What? That's a rock.
Is it? It has a head.
Oh, yeah. It does, it, it, there is a rock that sticks out that's very animal-like and I didn't carve it. Okay, so, I'm not clear on what it is we would be approving here.
It's odd because you don't, so there's, there's no change of use, right?
Yeah, there's no change of use.
You're not required to have a public hearing, but it's a very large building.
It's just a very large building that happens to fit within the envelope of setbacks.
Yeah, because it's a lot, yeah, because the, because the lot's so large.
This is large.
Is it bigger than a two-car garage? Thirty feet by eighteen, that's pretty big. My house just, you know, for content, it's twenty, like twenty feet wide in the front and only twenty-four feet. But we were originally looking at prefab two-car garages.
Oh, for a studio?
Yeah. And this is smaller than that? This is, this is smaller than that, on the inside it's smaller.
And there's no other garage on the property, right?
We have.
Well, it's under our house.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, there's a garage, yeah.
Yeah, one-car garage in, building the house, not, not a separate building.
You know, it's a raised ranch. This is the only accessory building.
That was a thought for a while, that we'd do a garage down there.
So you'd hike up the hill with your groceries. But then it would have been a question of this is behind our house and, you know, but it's on Kemble and then it would have gotten a little strange with the zoning on where the garage was compared to the house. I think it's like up on Locust, on Cedar, you know, there are a couple houses where you, you go and you enter the garage at the back of the property, which is on Cedar. So they, yeah, the garage relates to Cedar and the house.
Same thing on Morris, the red house.
Oh, that's right.
Has a garage on Fishkill on the backside.
That's right.
That's the old carriage house idea.
Back in the alley.
The alley, yeah.
But here, I'm, I'm just not.
Yeah, I wish John hadn't left, actually, because I'm not clear on what we're.
What purview the planet was.
Well, that, but then also just with respect to public notice and construct, you know, and so that the favors happens with our notice.
Well, they'll get that from the HDRB.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Oh, right, it'll have to go through.
There'll be plenty of public notice.
And they'll have to, and they'll do a public hearing.
Yeah. They'll have to be.
Yeah.
They do a public hearing for everything, don't they? But I'm just, you know, like at the very.
I don't know.
New construction? They don't do, they don't do them for everything. I don't know if they do them for all new construction, I mean, it seems so, but I just, I know that they don't do it for everything.
Yeah.
I don't know what their.
You have a raised ranch and you're in the historic district?
Local historic.
A local historic, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
There are non-contributing structures in the local, yeah, just the.
But they want to contribute and that's why they're building this.
Because I went through with the, we own the property behind the carriage house, the stone house. And I went through that whole process with the historical review board. It made me dizzy. It's been eight months coming every two weeks.
What we're lucky is this is right next door to Sue Myer, Sue and Joe Myers' house.
Okay.
That, that James built.
Yeah. That kind of fits in.
So, so it, it's, they already, you know, set the precedent.
That's the thing about precedents, they can't tell you, we don't like steel cables, oh, really? We don't like slope roofs, oh, really? We don't like windows set so far back, oh, really?
So the.
Something about precedents, funny with Glenn, he's just like, oh, you can enforce all the, well, until you set the precedent.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, so this.
I, I think it's, I, I'm okay with it with the HDRB hearing, I mean, I think that the public will get their input. I really want to start getting signs out there though.
Yeah, I just don't, yeah, because I don't think anything, anything about this meets our.
No, 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 basically we're just supposed to look at it and I don't see, look, it's gonna be up to code enforcement to make sure it's not.
Was it referred to us by the HDRB? Yes, and it's because of that one thirty-four dash whatever that says all accessory buildings have to be approved by the planning board. Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any, and I would think if there was, if there was a driveway, we'd have to have a public hearing, we'd have to start talking about, you know, that it's a, that there's circulation and there's all that, but.
It was probably put in there because of, what was it, Rock Street or Stone Street, the shed?
Oh.
Yeah, well, that, yeah.
Because it is an addition.
Yeah.
That's probably why it was added.
Yeah.
What, what's an addition, Mr.? It, it was added after, after the shed, the clause, all accessory buildings have to be approved by the planning.
Because that became a big issue.
Yes.
My chance was spreading.
For years.
About that.
Any discussion or? I mean, I guess what would make sense is obviously to go through HDRB and then to come back, because we don't know what you're gonna be, this could be completely different or materially different, you know, when you go through HDRB, so it seems like you would come back once and we could just do it that night.
Well, they would only change what it looks like.
Yeah.
Not where it's sitting or how the parking or the drainage. They might not like his windows, but how would that impact this board?
Are you applicant or board member?
I'm, I am neither.
Oh, you're doing a lot of talking for neither.
Switzerland.
Oh, yeah, actually, I think, yeah, I mean, I think for this discussion, member Rose has recused herself from participating in any decision-making. I can't decision-make, but I can certainly comment. So you're in the role of applicant?
So what do you, what do you think?
I, I, I'm good either way with it, I mean, I, I mean, I understand what Jude is saying, I think that's true, I think the aesthetics are gonna be the big issue with the historical review board. I mean, the location fits in with the, you know, setbacks or.
Right.
There's, it's not gonna be a occupied, you know, sleepover kind of place, you know, it's basically just to function as a, an art studio.
Right.
So, let me ask this, I hate to ask.
But again to your, but again, but again to your question, which is, when people come back to us, like Stone Street wasn't allowed to put power up to the shed.
Right.
Because the concern is it could then be converted and be occupied.
Right.
You know, so are we, you know, are we applying a lower standard, right? I mean, that's what you were talking about earlier, right?
Right.
We make all these people count their hundred and fifty square feet, you know, and, you know, and divide that by cars and then, you know, these people come in and it's four cars, right? You know, for twenty-four hundred square feet, right? Is that where you're going with this again? Yeah.
Well, that's part of it, but I mean, Steve already explained that it's gonna be walk-to, it's not gonna be a driveway leading down to it.
Right.
And that's something that we would have, I mean, that's something like the municipality has overs. If we had to put a driveway in, we'd have to go to the highway department and get their approval and then bring it to you. You'd have a curb cut and then it would be referred and the.
Curb cut and no curb.
Yeah, you need to put a curb in first.
Oh, that's right, but.
Install a cut curb.
And the, and the parking impact, I mean, there's like, you know, like any parking is like satisfied on site, I'm just like rolling through the things that we're supposed to be we're supposed to have kind of oversight over, and none of those things apply here. And I'm concerned that you're gonna pave your backyard, but.
She's gonna pave the backyard. She's the repave man.
Honestly, the only, the only thing, the only concern that I have, that I have, the thing that I, I'm concerned about is sort of the, just the idea of like, oh, it's a, it's a building that could eventually become a sort of a living situation.
Could.
Sort of that, that, that people.
Yeah, that's not even a tiny house.
And, and just, so I want to make sure that, okay, so if that's a, if that's something that could be an eventuality, I just want to like make sure that we're like, okay, we're like addressing it.
We have to formally approve it, right? So we have to do a resolution.
You have to formally approve it, but to answer your point, if we wanted to put in a kitchen and a shower, we'd have to have a building permit and it would be refused.
Right.
And it would end up right back in this room. Well, it might be, you know, but then, yeah, at the time, you can, I don't know, apply to the.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I need to look at the code because, I mean, we, there's been so many decisions when you think about sets.
Yeah.
You know, running the business in his garage.
I feel, I feel like we, we should.
Is this a business?
Sit on this.
So nothing gets sold.
No public.
Well, I mean, it's always potential, there's always potential sales of artwork.
And you want sales.
Right.
It's not, it's not, it's not really a public, you know, it's not, it's not open to the public.
It's not a retail outlet, yeah. It's not pop store sale either.
Yeah, no, no, definitely not.
I would like to just think about and dig into it just because I want to make sure that whatever issues arise, we can sort of eliminate and address them.
There was no public in, public content, it was basically running the business out of a garage to create things that are then for sale. Why was that not code compliant?
I think, I, you know.
There was noise, wasn't there?
Well, and smell, he was finishing, he was finishing. And he didn't have the setbacks. I'd like to, I'd like to sit with this before, just being like, yeah, hey, this is great, I love, I mean, it's great and I love it.
Yeah, me too, because I didn't get a chance to look at it in advance.
But let's just.
Yeah.
And then we can get, I can talk to John just to make sure that he, I'm clear on what we're actually doing, because it's, typically there's a, there's a, the accessory structures are garages, right? Not, you know, just so we're clear to what we're doing, but I don't, it doesn't seem like it'll be an issue, to be honest, but.
Yeah, I don't like to make decisions, I don't want to feel rushed when I make decisions.
Yeah, 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 and unfortunately, I know you sent a little, a couple days ago, but I haven't had a chance to look at it.
No, no, we, we were just happy to be on, have the chance to show it to you.
But I think you've got everything together, I mean, I don't think you need anything further, and I think, I don't think you need anything further for HDRB either, I mean, I think you're probably fine to, you know. When do you guys go to the dam?
Next week.
Did you hear from them? Next Wednesday. Are you on the agenda officially or are you just?
We, we're fine, I think.
Doesn't matter.
I think James said, yeah. Well, I've talked to.
No, James, well, James knows the drill, that's for sure.
Do you want to, you want to set it up for two weeks from today and then to come back then? Because hopefully they get whatever they need to get from.
Yeah, that's fine, very good.
Yeah, will you come back to see us?
Yeah, good.
Judith can bring you, because she's coming here anyway.
Any more public comment while you're still the public?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not public, I'm the applicant.
Public applicant?
Nicely distinguished.
Back to.
You're gonna stay.
Well, we've got another.
We have one more thing.
Oh, we do, you can wait.
It won't be long, I don't think. So, board business, public comment, we have no public, therefore there's no comment. We're onto board business, so we got this debt letter dated March 2nd from Savitree, who was the original company that did the assessment and then the preservation protection plan for the Copper Beach as part, as a condition of approval for the Butterfield site plan.
Did they actually give them the reports?
So that's what's in here, that's what we'll discuss, is that, two things that are in here that are troubling. So, no, we have not gotten the reports, I have, I have requested them, but we have not gotten them.
Do they exist?
The request, the response was when they're available, which something that's done contemporaneously should always be available, unless it was misplaced, I don't know, I mean, I'm not, you know, I mean, look, I don't know, but.
Door-gated.
Yeah, so if it, if they were, if they were produced in real time as they were supposed to be every other month, it's a lot of reports.
Right.
Right? Because that, you know, that's, so.
It's not only the reports, of, you know, it's the physical work.
Well, that's, it's the information contained in it, right. I will tell you that as you guys were there, and Matt's opinion, Matt Wyble, is that correct? Yes.
Yeah.
It was that it looked like they may not have been followed, so it would, I, I told the applicant, you know, the, 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 the site owner, it'd be, it'd be best for you to produce them to just show that you did the work, because when we come up and we see bramble everywhere and no mulch, well, clearly that, that wasn't followed.
Not mulch.
When, when both, when both arborists, including their arborist, is saying drought conditions, but yet the tree is supposed to be under protection, meaning it should be watered.
Well, this is.
It shouldn't incur drought the same way all the other trees do, it'd be good to then show reports to say it was watered. But I will tell you that the Garrison Tree arborist also said it suffered drought conditions, which is inconsistent with a tree that's supposed to be. But I will tell you that the Garrison Tree Arboretum also said it suffered drought conditions, which is inconsistent with a tree that's supposed to be under protection.
Save-A-Tree, in the, in their initial report, said irrigation should be properly maintained, which means you'll water.
You gotta water a tree.
That's what.
It's a lot, you know, this tree is really, it is very, it's very susceptible, so it's no different than being at a garden center, right?
Right.
You're keeping the root ball wet, because it's not in the ground. You've taken a massive tree, chopped a big chunk of its, you know, its root structure away, so you gotta keep that ball wet.
And a lot closer than they were supposed to.
That's the second piece that's very, that's very alarming. I don't know whose mistake this is. So there are two things in here that I'll discuss with the, with, with Matt Moran, which is that, the, you know, there were. You know, Save-A-Tree is gonna issue a report that says they don't have the every-other-month reports. Secondly, he says, he, you know, he, he says he was misinformed with how close the excavation was gonna be to the root ball.
Wait, I'm sorry, who was misinformed?
Matt Wyble.
At what point?
So the E A F.
Yeah.
In producing the documents for the E A F and the approval for the E A F.
Really?
He said he was, he was under the impression it was twenty-two feet roughly from the root structure, that they were gonna be excavating, and Matt Moran says it's twelve feet.
Right.
So he said, had he have been told that, so now we're going back pre-E A F, pre-preservation, he said he would've changed the site plan? Or he would've said, remove the tree, 'cause it's not gonna survive anyway.
Yeah.
So if the village residents were pushing to save the tree, which I think was very clear, there weren't a whole lot of things that were clear about this project, but people were really clear about the Copper Beach.
They were.
I think the, I think it's reasonable to assume that then they would say you'd have to, you have to alter the site plan to get the building away from the root structure. It is not clear to me, and I don't know how much effort we wanna put into this, you went through the E A F and found all sorts of, you know, things that weren't there, demonstrating shared parking, right? A major component of the entire plan wasn't demonstrated, right? And yet, reductions were given to things that were never demonstrated.
Right.
We then, in some ways, furthered that problem, but with the hopes that the county will comply with their, you know, with their, you know, with their busing, right? But now that we hear the county's talking about a community center, well, that's different. So we, our, our job never really comes to ends, you know, with, you know, no different than, like I was saying to Glenn.
Right.
I think it's reasonable for the people that live on either side of Nine Morris to say, this can't happen here, right? And if it can, well, then how do we, how do we say that their residential. Their residential experience, right, doesn't change considerably, and I think that's what they, I, I think that's what everybody looks to us for. I looked at the H D R B to, you know, to, anyway, that didn't go well. But anyway, so, you know, that these, that these things happen, right? You know, so I mean, that, you know, and, and overall, the H D R B is kinda protecting that, you know, architectural fabric, and, so we all have our job to do, right? And in this case, the public said, save this tree. Um, and we, we, the village, the village took its best effort, presumably. But what's problematic about this is, he basically says he was misled.
But we have absolutely no ability to punish them, for lack of a better word, for mistreating this tree. If it's not well, the only thing we can do is insist on a certain size replacement.
Isn't there the substantial conformity argument?
Good luck.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, that would be a bad. So, it had, the letter is pretty clear, it basically says that the tree is beyond any, um, any reasonable growth and should be removed.
They killed it.
It also says that it would not have survived, because according to him, he was not told accurately, correctly, truthfully. Where the, where the excavation was occurring with respect to the, with the, the tree trunk. He thought they were twenty-two feet away, twelve and a half feet was what, what, what he should've understood.
Poor tree.
Had he had that information, he said, he would've said, change the site plan or remove the tree, because the tree's not gonna make it.
What's the E A F show?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, we could, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I was going, is that, you know, you poured through it with respect to parking and all this kinda stuff, and it's in there. I mean, at some point, somebody had to have given them.
I'll take a look through.
Somebody had to have given them the information to say, here's where we're gonna start excavating to get this, and it's deep excavation, because underground parking.
Right.
You know, you're not talking about a seven-foot, eight-foot basement, you're talking about thirteen feet.
Yeah, from the superstructure of a trunk, it's about fourteen feet down.
Yeah, that's a lot, 'cause I mean, it's gotta support the building, and it's, and it's got cars in there, you know, so they've got, you know, and anything that's going above that, so. I guess the question is, you know, are we accepting the letter? My, my position is that, you know, I say, obviously, this is Matt Wyble's letter. I would have liked to have the reports included. I would like to at least communicate to the developer to say, we still need these reports, right? We need to put them in the file.
Yes, we definitely do.
And we definitely should include a, sort of a memo to the file that, that the reports have been requested a number of times, have not been forthcoming, and, you know. And make it, make it clear that diligence has been performed on the part of, of this board, and if not, if it hadn't been performed by boards prior.
I, I, honestly, I mean, I, I think he did, you know, a good job with the letter, but it is, it's not conclusive without the reports.
Right.
Well, that's unfortunate, is that, you know, and then, again, as Judith says, does it, does it really change the end game? There's no teeth in the resolution to then say, you'll then pay, you know, five dollars a pound, or you'll pay extra, you know, for, for growth ring. It's basically just, in fact, it doesn't even talk about the tree dying, it doesn't talk about replacement. They're willing to replace it, we don't, they, we can't make them replace it. But if they don't replace it, then we gotta talk about, what is this easement on the site about not trimming a tree that isn't there anymore?
They're offering to replace it. We should insist on a certain size, in my viewpoint. You know, they're gonna come back with a five-foot tree, you know?
Well, they definitely said a specimen tree.
A specimen tree can be three feet.
Exactly, yeah, well, that's a, that is made full, that's a, I'll give anybody a call, just a sapling, you know, a specimen. I guess it's a specimen of something.
I've seen it advertised in houses for sale that have specimen trees.
Is it?
Big.
But they're fancy.
With the specimen.
I would feel more comfortable if we had the reports in hand.
Yes, I, I agree. We wanna document if there is a pattern on other things that the developer has not performed in accordance with the.
I'm not concerned about that as much as I am with this specific issue.
Okay.
You know, because, I mean, there was a lot of effort put into how they were supposed to maintain the existence of the tree. And was it done or wasn't it done? I mean, it's, you know, from the public outcry to begin with, with that tree, to the supposed death or execution of the tree. It's, you know, we need to have those reports. And, and I think we also need to have Matt review them.
Matt Moran, yeah.
Yeah, not Matt Moran, not.
Oh, Matt Wyble, Matt Wyble, right, right, yeah. Yeah, no, I agree, and that was part of his, you know, that was part of his, uh, part of his, I think he just kind of said, well, look, so much time has passed.
Right.
At least gonna issue my report. Um, maybe what I could do is actually write him a letter, just say, could, would you, can we at least reserve the right that you're gonna, for the same number, right? Seven hundred dollars, that you'll, that you'll review these reports at a later date and provide a second opinion on the reports.
Right.
Um, but I think that's true. I mean, that's kinda the way I feel, is that our, our responsibility is to enforce the site plan. The site plan is very clear about this preservation plan of the tree. The, the arborist that we had go out there said, I'm not sure it was followed, it doesn't look like it was, but that's, you know, it's just kind of on a visual. We also have the arborist on the Butterfield side saying that the tree suffered drought, which it's, you know, and that part of its decline was from drought. Probably not a wise thing to say.
Right.
You know, because obviously, the tree's not supposed to suffer drought, like every other tree that suffered drought in the fall, this tree was supposed to be watered.
And did, did the, did the arborist for unicorn contracting say that he had, in fact, followed the.
We don't have that.
Preservation? I mean, regardless of whether he.
Matt said, Matt Moran did say that they followed it.
They followed it.
Well, he.
And I'm looking around and I'm going, really?
He wrote that they did, but the reports weren't available. He said quarterly, which is not every other month.
Right.
He said quarterly reports, um, but yet were not yet available.
Right.
Okay, so they didn't adhere to the site. I mean, they just.
We don't know, we don't know. It does, it appears they may not have.
Matt Moran has said that they did not adhere.
Oh, you mean with respect to saying they're quarterly, or you kind of misspoke, I mean.
He might have misspoke, but, okay.
Yeah. But it would be best, obviously, to have these reports, and, and look, let's, you know, let's, let's, you know, hope for the best. Maybe the reports say they did everything and it didn't work, right? You know?
That would be the best.
Yeah, it's, it's good for everybody, it's good, especially for them, to just kind of say, listen, we all, you know, we made our best effort, the tree is, the tree is old, these kinda things really stress out. The drought thing is concerning to me, because. That tree could not survive drought, and you shouldn't expect it to, because you know you're weakening it by, you know, by clipping away the, you know, the, the roots.
The other thing that kind of disturbed me, too, was, it, it's obvious that the, the limbs that should've been trimmed, that were dead, were never touched.
It wasn't.
I mean, so you had no mulch, you had no water, just by virtue of, their arborist saying they didn't irrigate it, 'cause it suffered drought.
Right.
You know, so there's a multitude of things that kinda lead to like.
That point towards, yeah. Well, I'll tell you, their answer to that is that they believe that the treatment plan came into effect during excavation. The excavation, when they're cutting within twelve feet of the roots. Where that doesn't hold water is, so does the fence, right?
Right.
So if your interpretation of, I don't do anything until I'm twelve feet from the tree, is, if that's true, then why has the fence been up for all these years? So that's really, it doesn't really kind of hold water, pun intended, to say that you, that you interpreted one piece this way. It's, it's all, it's all a single, it's all a singles, it's all a single section. And you interpreted the treatment and all this other stuff to come at a later date.
Right.
Then why did the fence go up, right? The fence, the fence was part of this, this, this protection plan. And the excavation, whether or not it's ten, fifteen, twenty feet away, the site's being disturbed everywhere, right?
But be that as it may, there's no mulch, nobody turned any branches.
And the bran, I mean, the bramble was just like going, you know, vines growing up the tree.
Flyer pants.
And who knows, maybe at some point, they had made the determination a while ago that the tree was beyond, you know, was beyond healthy growth, and what we're seeing just happened. It's unlikely, 'cause it's window, right? Um, but, alright, so we'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Matt Moran from Butterfield Realty and ask him again about these reports, that the planning board would like to have them in the file, um, and, and close the matter out. And then we'll see where that, where that gets us. Hook it up?
Hook it up.
That's good.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
I.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'm gonna start heading upstate, probably the third week in April.
We'll lose our alternate.